Yeah. And when they would...
Uh, it's...
I mean, it's probably down to the server.
I have my New York address on my...
Winter. I need a... And a watch out. I don't think we're...
That's a more...
A workshop.
That's just before the...
Guys like that.
Okay.
We make about a...
Margaret.
They came from two public school.
I'm sorry. Later on, I'm skipping through.
So, one for you.
I read it. Been there.
I'm going right there. Some go right there.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't really see anything in it. I don't...
Whatever.
Hello.
How are you?
Thank you.
Another one you just told me about your game. Nice conference.
Yep.
That's kinda like the school later. The terminal. Stephen, how many, uh, participants?
Two.
Whatever, two. Else I could really... I thought it was... Voice to... Little bit. Let's go a second.
Their LED. I think it's just the ball did. Cause they get changed.
Steve, Dave Bloom, it's, uh, two fifty-nine. Are we ready to...
No. They do work on this. They do. They didn't need this in store.
Now, what... The, the type of life...
Come home with a bad break.
Oh. Yeah.
I'm not talking about, uh, Ellen Lysick and High School. I'm kind of about... You're how you become... In the parking lot.
Yeah. And I purposely didn't have a clue about my son's kids. You don't wanna know all the stuff they're doing. As long as they're safe, healthy, and doing well in school. You know, you don't wanna know.
My kids, I had to take them up by the pain and... Okay.
Oh, that's... Yeah, they just leave. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. It is Thursday, August fourth, two thousand sixteen, three P M. Time for the meeting of the Gateway Services Community Development District Board of Supervisors Meeting. We have a forum. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge to our flag and country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. If you have a noise making machine like this, please put it on mute for the balance of the meeting. If you wish to speak to the board tonight, please fill out a form that's on the shelf in the back. Mr. Manager, Stephen Bloom is our manager, uh, district manager this afternoon. Mr. Bloom, uh, do we have folks who would like to speak to the board?
Uh, yes, we do. We have two. Uh, first up is Ed Tinkle, because I can talk about pond maintenance and orb chart.
This thing gets higher every time. Uh, for the record, Ed Tinkle, uh, one-one-one-eight-zero, Bend by Drive. Uh, first thing is, is a update on the pond maintenance bid package. Uh, we're ninety-nine percent complete. We got, uh, two pages to type, which are a part of the bid proposal that, uh, uh, would be attached to the, uh, uh, bid schedule, and then the thing will be done. Uh, I believe, uh, I don't know, Tony, have you received a coffee yet from April or Molly?
He has not.
He has not.
Can I go ahead? Is, is any of this relative to his review? Can I move it forward?
Yeah, I think he can go. Yeah, yeah, I think. And Tony, when you get it, I think, like we said at the last meeting, we used a lot of the, uh, PP stuff, so...
Okay. The only thing that's... Be real quick.
The detailed specifications, the performance evaluation and those things, you might wanna take a look at that.
Okay.
Then the last one was, is the last meeting brought up, and it still remains an issue, is where do we stand with those WCI Eastmans? Have we talked to them to... These guys are gonna have to get access to these deals to, to do the work.
I haven't had a chance since then, cause I was out of town for a week, but that's on my list to follow up to make sure.
Okay, okay, okay. Uh, so that's the pond deal, unless there's any questions or anything, uh, we're moving right along. We had to, uh, change the, uh, agenda, just to, uh, give you an idea of where we're at on this now. We're looking at if Tony can get his stuff back to us. We've tentatively got scheduled, uh, notice to bidders being published Monday, August the eighth. Uh, pre-qualification questionnaire and bid packages will be available for bidders to come in and pick up between the eighth and the nineteenth. The nineteenth, which is a Friday, we have a ten A M. mandatory pre-bid meeting, pre-qualification meeting, where they'll come in and ask any questions that they would want on the project. Uh, bidders then submit the pre-qualification statements to C D D staff on September the ninth. Gives them about two weeks to get those in. Then the staff and professionals, uh, review the pre-qualification documents from the ninth to the twenty-second, and we would ask that the board have a special meeting on September twenty-second to approve qualified bidders and, uh, send an invitation to bid to those qualified bidders. Be a real short, single-subject meeting on the twenty-second. Uh, qualified bidders submit their bid package to the C D D staff at a public meeting on October sixth at nine A M. Staff and professionals review the bid packages from the sixth and the nineteenth. Then the C D D Board of Supervisors review the bid recommendations and issue notice of award to the low responsibly responsible bidder on October twentieth. Uh, contract documents then are submitted to the big bidder for signature on the twenty-first. Then they're back to you for your signature and issuance, issuance of a notice of award on, uh, uh, November the third. That's kind of the schedule.
That was wonderful.
Way too fast.
I got lost at the second bid.
They're in, they're in the bid package. Would you, would, would help it?
Is there a reason why we can't see this in printed format?
Say again.
Is there a reason why we can't see that in printed format?
I would think...
We can make a copy of this for all of you, cause it's, it's ready to go.
Please, please do.
The only thing that's gonna change it would be is if Tony finds something drastically wrong that sets us back.
Oh, he's inching his hand. I can see this, so...
What I would request that be sent to me today, so I can look at it and get back to you later on Sunday with my, any comments I have read mine, in a Word format, so if I wanna make changes, I can do that.
Okay. Uh, Molly, Molly put it all together, so she'll have to...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have the, 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 the final documents in Word myself.
Do you want a PDF or a, or a hard copy of...
Oh, a Word.
He's gonna want a Word, so it can change it.
Just scan and convert it, so if you give me Word version, I mean, I can, I can make the PDF editable, but I'd rather have the Word.
This bid schedule, I just read from you, is two pages, so it'd be easy to make a copy in at the break, give you guys all a copy.
The reason, again, for the special meeting is...
The timing of your meetings and, uh, staff, it just fell on Thursday.
First, the fifteenth. First and the fifteenth.
You're the first and the fifteenth, and we just couldn't accelerate the schedule any quicker to meet your fifteenth meeting.
But there is some...
And then your next meeting is October.
Something that goes on the first meeting in October, right?
That's the sixth.
Something that you will mention...
Yeah, at the first October meeting, you will receive staff's recommendation on who are the pre-qualified bidders, then you endorse that, and then you send out the forebowl notice of an invitation to the qualified bidders that a bid is due at a certain date.
And why did we need the special meeting?
To... I, you guys are the ones who told me to do that last time. I thought you had to endorse the pre-qualified bidders.
The, the board does.
Okay, so then that's the only way it'll work.
Mr. Attorney, is there any reason, uh, that we, uh, should or could not have a special meeting on the twenty-second?
No, sir, there's no reason why not. In fact, what the board could do on the fifteenth, the board could continue...
Continue.
Fifteenth meeting to September twenty-second, so they don't have to advertise again for the sole purpose of considering, uh, the recommendations as to these...
Yeah, just a one, one, one task deal.
Was that the twenty-seventh or the twenty...
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay.
Twenty-second, I'm sorry.
It is more what I would call regular business. That, that probably is a better way to proceed then, wouldn't you say?
That is a, that is a legal and valid way to proceed, yes.
Uh, members of the board, is it okay if we have a continued meeting on September the twenty-second? We'll have a meeting on the, regular meeting on the fifteenth and continue to have a meeting, continuation meeting on the twenty-second.
You could be, have to have a special notice of that meeting advertised, because it's outside the normally scheduled regular meeting schedule.
You're not smiling. What's the matter?
I'm just saying, why couldn't we just do it all on the twenty-second?
You mean move the, move the fifteenth meeting to the twenty-second?
Yeah. And then everybody can all be here for everything.
Members of the board?
Just a thought.
Well, we have, we have to take into consideration the timing, schedules, and stuff of the administration, management, uh, and when they have to get everything done and...
I think it would give us actually longer.
Did it actually give them an extra week?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that would be fine, to move your regular board meeting, defer it to the twenty-second.
Okay, then we will need a motion to move the second meeting in September from the fifteenth to the twenty-second.
Pam did that.
I'm sorry?
Pam did that.
Oh, you did that?
Yeah.
So, there won't be no meeting on the fifteenth, yes?
Say, that's correct, yeah.
I'll make a motion to move the...
I have a motion to...
Meeting from the...
To move the second, the regular meeting, the second meeting in September from the fifteenth to the twenty-second. Do I have a second?
I'll second the second.
Who's on first?
I don't know.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, I have a, a motion and a second to make the second meeting of September on the twenty-second, the fifteenth. Does any conversation, heard the conversation on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Five-zero, Mr. Manager.
Stephen, and April, you will make sure the notice is placed in the paper for that.
I will.
Hope the rest of it goes easier than that. Uh, the next thing was, is that, uh, Gary at the last meeting, uh, handed me a sheet and wanted to know what could be done. While I can't take really any authorship in this, I didn't wanna present what, uh, staff did, and they've got a trifold for Gateway, very similar to the one that you had seen from the city of Fort Meyer. Uh, did make a couple of changes because of what I believe to be a legal issue with some of our HOAs, cause apparently in the city of Fort Meyer, they had indicated that HOAs were responsible for storm sewer, uh, maintenance, and they aren't here.
Right.
So, uh, I indicated and had, uh, L. make a wording change. I don't even know where she put it now that's in here, but, yeah. Uh, while catch spaces located throughout the Gateway are a part of the surface water management system operated and maintained by the C D D, it would be in everyone's best interest if they are kept plea of any debris. This would include HOAs residents and property management. So, try to get them on board and working on this, but I think that, uh, L.'s gotta work with you and then figure out the logistics out, it's going to go out, but I believe it possibly could go out with the next billing.
Well done.
And then also, she's got a hard copy on the, or going to put a hard copy on the website, so... And this will be, as I understand it, I'd written down after you brought it up, went back and read all the books I had, and came up with about ten of these topics.
Good.
So I think what we'll do is try to have a continuation. The only problem is, is that you only do the billings every two months, which means this thing's gonna drag out for a year and a half, but maybe we can consolidate...
Is better than what we've not been doing.
Or put three flyers in one. But anyway, that's that.
And if you can, and then if there's, if we can consolidate that information and be able to house it either on the existing website or as part of the, the new plan, as far as content, it's probably a good idea.
Yeah, so we've posted, we've posted some information to Facebook. We would also like to post this type of information to our website, and staff has been working, um, with trying to come up with some ways since we want to increase our community relations and our public education, um, flyers and communication. Uh, we're looking at some different ways that we can possibly get some sponsorship, uh, some little ads or something on it. Uh, been watching how other municipalities are doing it, and, you know, they just simply put on there that the flyer was sponsored by and, and maybe, um, uh, reach out to some of the, the folks in the community, and I was gonna reach out to you.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a bad idea on our billing to also maybe identify what our Facebook, uh, page location is, to get awareness, cause it's all about likes and, you know, that'll put it on your timeline.
The other one is, you got fifty-three, fifty-four HOAs. I know I'm taking this one to our meeting on the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Uh, but contacting each of the HOAs and sending to them, see if they can get it on their agenda for their, uh, what do you call it, uh, sheets or, uh, Facebook or website.
Yeah, and if we can get some, maybe some extra hard copies to leave them at some of the HOA clubhouses or, it would be a bad idea, too.
Okay. Uh, next item I had was on the district organizational chart that was in the board book, uh, this time, first time I've seen one like this. Uh, it, it looks like a good start, but I have two recommendations. Uh, those two lines that go up to the general manager, I'm firmly convinced that this thing should be set to where we have an operations wing and we have an administrative wing, and I'd put Parks, Recreation, Natural Resources, Public Works, and Utilities all under Chris, Utilities Manager, Public Works.
Okay.
That would be the recommendation I'd make. Other than that, and, uh, interesting, very good. That's all I had.
Questions for it? Thank you very much. Mr. Manager?
Sure. Uh, the second one is Ed, and I'm gonna probably mispronounce...
Seashell.
Sickel?
Seashell.
Seashell, oh. I apologize.
No problem.
And you'd like to talk about Girl Scout building and, I guess, as district general manager?
Yes. Ed Seashell, Pinecrest, um, I'm gonna talk about the Girl Scout building. My property abuts the Girl Scout property, and as a result, I have many concerns as to who purchased this, this property. I believe there is a good reason why the developer of Gateway put the offices where they are today, far away from residential areas. My understanding is that recently the board did two things. They had the Ops Manager contact the Girl Scouts, explore the, the selling price of the, uh, building and range from, they'd start at three seventy-five up to four twenty-five. And they had Tetra Tech perform cursor review, building, provide a cost evaluation, which has come in at a hundred and eighty thousand required and two seventy-one optional modification. The final cost of this project is unknown, however, after I've talked to many people, I've come up with a total cost of approximately eight hundred thousand. I see where Tetra Tech has provided a total cost of seven hundred thousand per expansion of the existing building. I have a few suggestions I feel should be looked at before any final decision is made. I feel it would be appropriate to have some sort of dialogue or provide some material to at least property residents abutting or in the immediate area of this potential building purchase. I also have some concerns that our staffing has increased considerably. Has anyone looked at the staffing levels through, say, the year two thousand and eleven and compared them to the ERUs to come up with a ratio of number of staff per ERU? I believe this could provide a very telling story. This is purely a suggestion. Maybe someone at, or Tetra Tech could come up with a better ratio. Has anyone looked into renting a trailer for the offices required? If the district was to purchase this building, it would be a nice stretch of land that joins with a fun park. What assurance do I and other Pinecrest homeowners have that the Gateway Services C D D will not sometime in the future enlarge the fun park to accommodate more people and add LED security lighting, which could pose many problems for Pinecrest? I see where motion detector lighting will be added to provide better security in the area. Right now, I wonder how this will affect the homes in Pinecrest. This Girl, Girl Scout building contains forty-one hundred square feet, estimated cost eight hundred thousand. Needs to be determined exactly how much of the total space would be earmarked for offices versus extra space for other activities and meetings. If I lived in Pelican, Stony Brook, or Silver Lakes, I would be unhappy that my taxes would be going up to provide such space. In summary, I hope we do our homework on this before jumping ahead. To talk to the Girl Scouts about the building selling price before we even know the required cost of modification improvements to the building is not a good sign. Second issue I'd like to talk about is the district general manager. I understand we're considering hiring Ms. White. It's in your book today. It's being requested that Mr. De Cerbo be contacted to assist in the onboard process and work with Ms. White to initiate his previous recommendations. I'm wondering how much money the board is going to spend to hire Mr. De Cerbo to train Ms. White, who will be paying, who we will be paying between eighty and a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year, excluding benefits. I assume this is just salary. Additionally, I'd be interested, um, okay, I understand this individual is first hired by Severn Trent and worked for them. Now she will be working for us, and before any vote is taken, I believe this job should be open to all qualified individuals and resumes requested. I have, I have can't, I've, I've, I've looked into how many people on the board even have her resume, and the majority of the members on this board haven't even seen the resume yet, as of four o'clock yesterday afternoon. My last comment is, I remember when this board voted to place the manager of Ops position under the managing company, and I remember how the board voted at that time. The two people voting against this move were Ms. Feinberg and myself. I have not wavered one bit and still feel that this is the right move. I find it interesting, looking back, that the current chairman thought this was a great idea and voted to move the position under the management company, and his vote made the difference. I have a copy of my comments for everybody.
Questions for Mr. Seashell?
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I understand.
So, you've got a bodyguard with you in the hood?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Um, Mr. Attorney, do you wish to make a comment?
Well, I just did, uh, on that issue in the general manager, there was a corrective memorandum that I sent out to delete that last paragraph referencing the onboarding process with Mr. De Cerbo after going back and looking at the minutes of the board, and I attached to that corrective memorandum, the minutes of the board meeting, I think in July. Let me really, I, I, let me pull that memo out. So that, that portion has been deleted from the recommendation.
Thank you.
Let me get that date exactly, if I could, for the record. Uh, the June second, two thousand sixteen meeting, on the board.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Members of the board, are we ready to proceed to the committee reports?
Yes.
Uh, the first one is, uh, item three A, Health Preserve Advisory Committee, recommendations concerning traffic control agreement. Uh, Mr. Phil, would you like to help us out?
Yeah.
Phil Meese, ninety-two, ninety-six, Trias Drive, representing the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. Actually, uh, you had my written report, our written report in your, in your board book, and there are really three items that we would like your approval for today, so I'd like to start, actually, because it's the first item in the, in the report, with the proposed new landscape contract for Pelican Preserve. Uh, I neglected to mention, uh, in this, in my written statement, that this contract is actually signed by the Master Association. It is a Master Association contract, but we are bringing it to you for approval, as we have in the past, because we pay for it. Uh, it's, it's, uh, Pelican Reserve pays for it. Uh, as mentioned, uh, in the written material, uh, we have, we had four, actually, we originally had five companies that bid on this. One of them dropped out because they were, they did not have, um, a Toro certified person on their, on the, in their organization, and this is necessary. We have a Toro irrigation control system, and they have to have certified people on that, so the one, uh, company called Land Care dropped out. But we did refu, we did get bids from four companies. Uh, the bids are laid out, I believe, in the attachment that should have been in your board book. Um, after reviewing these and the members of the P-PAC reviewed all of the bids, uh, well, we, we actually reviewed the bid specs first and then all of the bids, um, and we had, we are recommending that we, we hire, we make a contract with Ameriscape, who is the incumbent. Um, we've been very pleased with Ameriscape's, uh, service, and, uh, their bid is some eighty-six thousand dollars less than the bid of the nearest competitor in this situation. So there are two contracts. One of them is for C D D residential common areas, and then there's another one for the shared areas, which, uh, has some commercial, uh, some of the commercial people, uh, pay for the, part of the shared area. So...
May I have, excuse me? Are you finished?
I'm finished.
May I have a motion for approval?
Um, yeah, a motion, but just a clarification comment.
We can wait, we have a second.
I, I understand that, thank you.
I've been around, but... I have a second. Uh, Mr. Gil, please, second. Mr. Manager, Mr. Newbauer, please proceed.
Phil, could you, just for the record, so that people, you know, looking at the minutes at a later date, or somebody that may come on the board in, in November would have better clarification, what we're actually really approving is the part that is the C D D ownership thing, but there is this agreement between P-PAC, the residents, and the Master Association...
That's right.
Et cetera.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and for clarification, I think Mr. Meese was mentioning, the agreement will be between the Master Association and the vendor...
And the vendor.
Under the overall operation and maintenance agreement that the C D D has with the Master Association.
Yeah, I...
Thank you, Mr. Newbauer. Thank you.
Does it need more explanation than that, Gary? I mean, that's, uh, that's, that's basically it.
Yeah.
And, um, uh, we feel that, um, having P-PAC be able to interview or, or, in, in this case, we did not interview them because we decided that, that this was, that this was the best bid. We knew the, we knew the incumbent. Uh, we were not concerned by the fact that their bid was a lot lower than anybody else's cause they know the property, and so they know what they're bidding on. Uh, we also added some extra services into the contract for this next year. Our specs added some extra services in, um, more mow, more mowing, couple, four more mowings, uh, more weeding, and so we're, we're satisfied. They also are providing more oversight, uh, for their people. Uh, Ameriscape is a, is a vendor for a number of the individual communities within Pelican Preserve, and there has been some, um, complaints that, that they're not responsive enough to some of those communities, so they've provided more people to kind of oversee it, so we're, we're convinced now that we will have very, very good, we haven't had a problem, but, uh, that we'll get good responsiveness from, uh, from Ameriscape.
So, Phil, just so I'm clear, cause I don't...
Yeah.
I just don't have a lot of the history here.
Sure.
So, the common, the C D D common area that's in Pelican Preserve...
Yes.
The P-PAC covers, um, covers that portion, and we don't include that in our mainscape?
That's right. They are not in the mainscape, yeah. We, we, we selected a different vendor. This goes back, um, four, five years. Uh, we decided to select Ameriscape, even though mainscape was a vendor here in, uh, Gateway.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Five-zero, Mr. Manager. Phil, please proceed.
Sure. Uh, the next thing is traffic control agreement. Uh, this is an item that has been considered previously, uh, by P-PAC, uh, and it is to have a traffic control agreement with the Fort Myers Police Department. Now, what this, what this would do, right now, the Fort Myers Police Department comes on to the property periodically. Uh, they can enforce, uh, reckless driving and, uh, other things, but they cannot enforce the speed limits, particularly on Pelican Preserve Boulevard. Uh, we are concerned that, uh, there is some speeding on Pelican Preserve Boulevard, people rolling through stop signs, and we feel that, and there is no magic bullet here, but this is just one more step of making traffic, making it safer for traffic within Pelican Preserve. Uh, so we would have, by doing, by ser, signing such a, an agreement, uh, we would have, uh, a little bit more police presence than we've had. Uh, our thinking is that we would then combine the work of the Fort Myers Police Department with that of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and they don't require an agreement like this, um, to set up a program that would, um, enforce the traffic, uh, laws a little bit more stringently, uh, and make the, make the community safer, uh, as far as traffic is concerned. Also, having the presence of police a little bit more frequently on the property would probably, uh, address, uh, security problems, uh, to a slight degree. So, we are recommending, uh, that the board today approve going forward with setting up this agreement. Uh, it would be required that, uh, Tony and the council for the city, um, agree on the agreement. Uh, then we would have to have a review by the city engineering department, uh, of our roads, uh, to make sure that the signage and, uh, other facilities there are okay with regard to the police department. Once that's approved, uh, then we'd be ready to have a contract signed, uh, between, in
Mr. Attorney, do you wish to make a comment?
Well, just on that issue in the General Manager, there was a corrective memorandum that I sent out to delete that last paragraph referencing the onboarding process with Mr. De Cerbo after going back and looking at the minutes of the board. And I attached to that corrective memorandum the minutes of the board meeting, I think, in July. Let me pull that memo out. So that portion has been deleted from the recommendation.
Thank you.
Let me get that date exactly, if I could, for the record. The June 2, 2016 meeting of the Board.
Thank you. Members of the Board, are we ready to proceed to the committee reports?
Yes.
The first one is Item 3A, Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee recommendations concerning traffic control agreement. Mr. Phil, would you like to help us out?
Yeah. Phil Meesey, 9296 Trias Drive, representing the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. Actually, you had my written report, our written report, in your Board book. And there are really three items that we would like your approval for today. So I'd like to start, actually, because it's the first item in the report, with the proposed new landscape contract for Pelican Preserve. I neglected to mention in this, in my written statement, that this contract is actually signed by the Master Association. It is a Master Association contract, but we are bringing it to you for approval, as we have in the past, because we pay for it. It's Pelican Preserve pays for it. As mentioned in the written material, we have, we had four, actually, we originally had five companies that bid on this. One of them dropped out because they were, they did not have a Toro certified person on their, in their organization. And this is necessary. We have a Toro irrigation control system, and they have to have certified people on that. So the one company called Land Care dropped out. But we did, we did get bids from four companies. The bids are laid out, I believe, in the attachment that should have been in your Board book. After reviewing these, and the members of the P-PAC reviewed all of the bids, well, we actually reviewed the bid specs first, and then all of the bids. And we are recommending that we, we make a contract with Ameriscape, who is the incumbent. We've been very pleased with Ameriscape's service. And their bid is some $86,000 less than the bid of the nearest competitor in this situation. So there are two contracts. One of them is for CDD residential common areas. And then there's another one for the shared areas, which has some commercial, some of the commercial people pay for the part of the shared area.
May I have, are you finished?
I'm finished.
May I have a motion for approval?
Yeah, a motion, but just a clarification comment.
We can wait until we have a second.
I understand that.
Thank you. I have a second. Ms. Gil, please, second. Mr. Manager, Mr. Newbauer, please proceed.
Phil, could you, just for the record, so that people, you know, looking at the minutes at a later date, or somebody that may come on the Board in November, would have better clarification. What we're actually really approving is the part that is the CDD ownership thing, but there is this agreement between P-PAC, the residents, and the Master Association, et cetera.
Yes.
Yeah, and for clarification, I think Mr. Meesey was mentioning, the agreement will be between the Master Association and the vendor.
And the vendor.
Under the overall operation and maintenance agreement that the CDD has with the Master Association.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Newbauer.
Does it need more explanation than that, Gary?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's basically it. And we feel that having P-PAC be able to interview, or, in this case, we did not interview them, because we decided that this was, this was the best bid. We knew the, we knew the incumbent. We were not concerned by the fact that their bid was a lot lower than anybody else's, because they know the property. And so they know what they're bidding on. We also added some extra services into the contract for this next year. Our specs added some extra services in, more mowing, couple, four more mowings, more weeding. And so we're satisfied. They also are providing more oversight for their people. Ameriscape is a, is a vendor for a number of the individual communities within Pelican Preserve. And there has been some complaints that, that they're not responsive enough to some of those communities. So they've provided more people to kind of oversee it. So we're convinced now that we will have very, very good, we haven't had a problem, but that we'll get good responsiveness from Ameriscape.
So Phil, just so I'm clear, because I don't, I still have a lot of the history here.
Sure.
So the common, the CDD common area that's in Pelican Preserve?
Yes.
The P-PAC covers, covers that portion, and we don't include that in our mainscape?
That's right. They are not in the mainscape, yeah. We selected a different vendor. This goes back four, five years. We decided to select Ameriscape, even though mainscape was a vendor here in Gateway.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero, Mr. Manager. Phil, please proceed.
Sure. The next thing is traffic control agreement. This is an item that has been considered previously by P-PAC. And it is to have a traffic control agreement with the Fort Myers Police Department. Now, what this, what this would do, right now, the Fort Myers Police Department comes on to the property periodically. They can enforce reckless driving and other things, but they cannot enforce the speed limits, particularly on Pelican Preserve Boulevard. We are concerned that there is some speeding on Pelican Preserve Boulevard, people rolling through stop signs. And we feel that, and there is no magic bullet here, but this is just one more step of making traffic, making it safer for traffic within Pelican Preserve. So we would have, by doing, by signing such a, an agreement, we would have a little bit more police presence than we've had. Our thinking is that we would then combine the work of the Fort Myers Police Department with that of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and they don't require an agreement like this, to set up a program that would enforce the traffic laws a little bit more stringently, and make the, make the community safer, as far as traffic is concerned. Also, having the presence of police a little bit more frequently on the property would probably address security problems to a slight degree. So we are recommending that the Board today approve going forward with setting up this agreement. It would be required that Tony and the Council for the City agree on the agreement. Then we would have to have a review by the City Engineering Department of our roads to make sure that the signage and other facilities there are okay with regard to the Police Department. Once that's approved, then we'd be ready to have a contract signed between, in this, in this case, between yourselves, the CDD, and the Fort Myers Police Department. So we're asking for approval for that.
You ready? Yeah, I finished.
Sure.
Is there a motion for approval?
Yeah. I'll make the motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Conversation?
Yep. Additionally, I think, Phil wanted, I think he wanted to mention the fact that we've had two meetings with Carl Karakis from the City of Fort Myers regarding the signage, regarding some specific locations within Pelican Preserve, and recommendations from him, which were quite extensive. And he spent a lot of time both with us, us being the Safety Committee, of which I've been an invited person to, and in addition to that, on his own. We gave him, he asked for permission that his name be known at the entry gate, so that he could, on his own, come and view traffic and view these various places that we pointed out, and the signage. And he's done it repeatedly. And then in addition to that, he's assured that there will be a complete study that's done by the Engineering Department of it as well, which I know that there's been some discussions before regarding that the residents of Pelican Preserve engage another traffic study. We've had two already, and that obviously would be an additional expense. And I think Phil would concur that we feel that there's no need for an additional traffic study, since we're going to have one that's done by the City of Fort Myers as well. In fact, they won't go into the agreement unless we agree to let them do that.
They have to, they have to do that in order to implement the agreement.
Yeah. Are you finished?
Aye.
I just want to go on record as saying that when this item was initially talked about four, five, six years ago, I was pretty much opposed to it. But if Pelican Preserve grows, and as I observe the violations that you earlier mentioned, in good conscience, I have to support this recommendation.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero, Mr. Manager. Phil, are you continuing?
I have one more item that we would like, like you to approve. In order to, it turns out that we have some extra funds in our budget this year. And there are a couple of projects that we would like to undertake with those funds. We may also, we had originally included these projects in our fiscal year 2017 budget. We may remove them depending upon, we have some, a little bit more work to do on the budget. But we would like approval. And there are two projects, again, mentioned in the, in the written report. One of them is, we have a lot of dead plants along Tree Line at the edge of the property. It's crepe myrtle that has died. It needs to be removed and replaced. And then we have three places within the community where we need to do some more planting. So these are two projects totaling about $42,000 between them. We feel it's necessary to go forward with this work. And so we ask for your approval to do it, since it is a non-budgeted item.
Motion for approval. Second?
Second.
Okay. Since it's a non-budgeted item?
Right.
That, you have money in your appropriation budget, but it wasn't, it's not just a-
That's not being used in other, other accounts that would, that would help us to cover this.
So there's no need for an amendment to either, to the current fiscal '16 budget?
Not, not at all. We have, we have the funds available within the current fiscal '16 budget.
Possibly, you might want to look at Steve and see if Steve had any input.
Yeah. I mean, they do have extra right now. What will happen is, you know, right now, we're in August. Obviously, we're approaching year end next month. We're going to take a look at all the funds, in particular, this one. And if we have to, we'll make a budget adjustment.
The, we have, we budgeted for a couple of things that didn't come to pass, and that's the reason we have a lot of money. One of them is the conveyance of the Cypress Grove roads. We had money in our 2016 budget for those road, for the roads and, and the ponds in Cypress Grove. This is money that was not spent. In this particular case, we're talking about the roads, because the ponds budget is separate. The other thing is that it turns out that part of the landscaping along Tree Line, south of the entrance, along the wall, part of it is our responsibility, but we had budgeted the entire amount, and part of it is the responsibility of the Master Association. It's in their budget. We had put it in our budget. So we had two fairly significant items that we're not going to have to spend money on this year. So as we look at our estimate, our projections for the end of the year, we're going to, we're going to have leftover, we're going to have funds left over. So we're looking at doing this, and we may even be back to you for a couple of other things, if we still think we have more, more funds in the budget.
Is the Master Association going to pay for the Tree Line work in perpetuity?
Yes, south of a certain, you know, south of the, what we call the brown wall, as opposed to the white wall.
Thank you. Any further question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero.
Thank you, unless there are other questions about the written report.
Thank you very much.
I'm finished. Thank you.
We also have the committee reports, Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee minutes of June 21st, and Tony Brook of June 8th. We've gotten in the habit of approving those minutes, and I would entertain a motion to approve those, the minutes of those two meetings.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, and I have a second. For conversation, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, is there a manager? Consent agenda, report from the Operations Manager. April, will you give us a little bit of your time there?
Sure. April White, you're Operations Manager. One of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention that is not in the report is, currently, we are working on reassigning our credit cards. With Cal leaving, his name is on our one credit card that we use, which is actually, it would probably be better and more secure if the actual users of the credit cards had their own names on them. So Stephen wanted me to bring it to your attention. I've been working with him and the staff at ST to make sure that we get our credit cards set up appropriately. And so we're doing that with the actual user's names on them, and they will be kept in the safe, and only brought out when we have to use them. We use the credit cards for internet purchases, and occasionally, if we have a one-time purchase at a vendor, where we don't want to take the administrative time to set up a credit account.
Is it used for gasoline for the vehicles?
I think we have a separate gas card for, for the gas.
How many users are we talking about? How many?
One, two, three, I think it was, I think it was four of us on that list.
Purchasing authorization.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions on that?
Please, yeah, please proceed.
Okay. One of the things that I want to be sure that I update you on is the fun park. We have, we have installed another doggie station, and we are having some issues with the lighting. That's one of the, one of the priorities we've been working on. The lighting is, continues to be a struggle. The grid of the lights coming up Eagle Point is to capacity. We've been working with our contractor Bentley. So there's some electrical that we might have been able to come across from Girl Scouts, but that's not our property. So I need to work with the, with the engineers to see if we have an easement there to come across, to put additional lighting in the park. So our quick fix is, we are considering, I've asked, I've requested an estimate, to move one of the streetlights at Eagle Point on the street just up to the corner of the park. Because one of the issues, the, one of the big concerns is we're having the nighttime activity in the park. Well, we have signage out there that says the park is closed at dusk, but if it's already dark, when they're pulling in, you cannot see the sign. So one of the things that we want to be sure of is the messages that we want to communicate to the residents and patrons of the park, is that they're well lit, and they can see them when they pull in. So that's one of our first priorities. We are working on, we've talked to our contractor about the technology available for cameras. That can, continues to be a struggle as well. We can put cameras over there, but we cannot get a signal. We have to have a station there to actually house a device, or we have to be able to send a signal across to our closest point. To collect that data would be the pool facility. And we haven't quite figured out the exact technology that we need to do that, but we're working on that. And one of the things that we're working on is signage. We don't have the examples of the signage to bring to you today, but I will try to get that to you at the next Board meeting. You guys said that you wanted to participate in the selection of the signage, and I will bring that to you at the next Board meeting.
Do we, do we need to see signage to approve it?
They requested that at the last Board meeting.
I don't.
Or maybe if we can just send out a sample via email. I'd hate to wait another two weeks for, for signage. Can we just send out samples?
If you send out a sample, you can, you can't go back and forth and give April suggestions and changes, just that here's what it is for your information.
How about we just, first of all, the first sign that needs to be replaced is the actual fun park sign. The one that's right on the corner. The thing's bubbled, it's deteriorated, et cetera. So can we all agree at this point in time, so that there's no more delays, a sign that duplicates what's there right now, that somebody could go over, undo the two screws, take it to a sign making company, and go, give me a duplicate of this in plastic that won't deteriorate like this one did in the past, and have it in by Friday?
I don't know about that latter part. How about the Friday?
Are we talking?
Then find another sign.
The entrance.
Out by Gateway, right on the Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay. So one of, one of the things that staff and I have been working on is the style of sign that we're going to put at the front entrance of the park. If there was more information, so I didn't know if we wanted to make it a little bit more appealing as we approached the park, I was thinking maybe more of a monument style, not like the large entry monuments, but more of that style with, with like, all of the information consolidated in one, one area. So as long as we're wanting to just duplicate exactly what is there, I think that should be easy enough, and we don't, we don't want any sort of consistency. Or do you want me to just duplicate exactly what's out there?
Short of putting a billboard up in something of a billboard size, no one's going to be able to read it as they drive down, and we certainly don't want people stopping on the Boulevard to read the sign before they turn. We just want them to know that's the fun part, right?
Okay, so just duplicate and sign.
The second part, if there would be anything added, would be the debatable hours dusted on. And that sign should be readable both ways. Eastbound, westbound, or whether you call it northbound, southbound, or partridge in pear tree.
Well, I think that, I think that, the entrance sign is really just a notification of, it's fun park turn here.
But it also, by saying dusted on, it reemphasizes.
Yeah, well, I was thinking more that when you drive in the parking lot, that's-
I didn't say not to have one there as well.
So you're saying on the entrance? You want to specify that? Okay, all right. I was just going to say, we definitely need something in the parking lot, and probably even, you know, something over by the, the facilities. I mean, I don't think we can stress enough, because if you come into the parking lot, you may miss the sign if you come into the other direction.
How about neon?
Doesn't really matter to me. I'm just saying that we want it visible regardless of which direction you come in. Parking lot, should be something stated there, and then somewhere within the area of, of activity. Just to, again, around the basketball court, playground area, should specify when we're closed, which is, and what was the, what is your recommendation for an alternative, alternative to dusk to dawn? Was it, it says something about after dark, or was there something that you found?
Yeah, close it, yeah, yeah, we have an, we have an example on, I think was, park closes at dark.
Yeah. Maybe that's simple.
As far as the lights are concerned, one thing, are those lights LED, or are they incandescent? And if we switch to LEDs, then there'd be a lesser current drawn that would alleviate part of the problem with power. Isn't that true?
It could potentially, I was talking to Bentley today about that, and potentially, just depending on the type of, the type of lamp it is.
Yeah.
You've heard the conversation of the Board. I, I think there's no question that we need the sign taken down and redone, as Mr. Newbauer said, and some other signs put up that says dusted on. It's been four weeks at least since we got the conversation from residents about this issue, and I think we've used up enough time and conversation on it. Let's get some things done between now and the next meeting, and if one or two people don't like them, we'll listen to that, but we can say that we've gotten some things, we've made some progress, we've gotten some things done, okay?
Okay, so I think I'm understanding that we pretty much are just looking for redoing the verbiage on the signage, and then replicating exactly what we have out there now.
That sounds pretty much like what we've agreed to, and as time goes on, and we get better understanding of where we're going, we might want to change in the future, but I think it's important we do something now, and show the residents that we can make things happen.
Yeah, and I would just state, you know, from a lighting perspective, again, we're talking about, we want low voltage, just something to illuminate that area enough to where it's not dark, where you can see if there's, you know, some activity. So low voltage tying into the existing lighting, you know, I wouldn't, wouldn't try to over engineer this, the lighting aspect, in my opinion.
April, you feel confident you understand what we want?
Mm-hmm.
We'll give you a moment to make some notes there.
Okay, were there any other questions on Lake 104? I know that was a hot topic. We have had the survey done. We went out and did the inventory of the plants that we would need to remove to get the contractor back to the bank of Lake 104. We will work on preparing some drawings off of that survey, compiling a packet for Tony to review.
Where can I see some photos of the way Lake 104 looks right now?
We were just out there yesterday and, and took a bunch of them. Want me to send them to you?
Yeah, I would, if you could manage that.
Is that just to Mr. Guy, or to everyone? The photos?
You can give it to everyone.
Wouldn't you all like to see?
I thought it'd be up on the big screen, in living color.
Well, that is wonderful, but that's not going to happen today, is it?
I, I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to make a presentation. There's nothing that we're requesting from the Board at this point in time.
No, but don't, you have the photos in a digital format, is that true?
Yes, they were just put on the camera yesterday.
That you could plug right into, especially, we'll let Stephen be the one to plug it right into his laptop.
I-
No, can't do that.
I think Elle is probably gone for the day, and-
She has them on her camera.
Yeah, it's, they're probably still on the camera. We were just there yesterday afternoon at 3:30.
Well, let's, let's send them out, let's send them out to all the Board members when it's convenient.
Okay.
And have them ready to show on the big screen at the next meeting, please.
Okay. Were there any other questions? Any specific questions?
Yeah. On, under Item 4, Vision 2020. Item number six, develop a pay benefits employee retention program. Do we have such a thing now?
We do not have a retirement plan. We have a minor benefit, but it's not a, it's not a retirement plan designed for retention.
Well, the benefits are, we talked about them last meeting, they're about 18% of, in addition to their wages.
Yes.
I wouldn't call that kind of minor. But one of the suggestions I'd make is you should add on to that also a training, and so that we budget for specific training.
There is some funds in the, in the upcoming budget for that.
We did that about a year ago, and that should be an integral part-
Development.
-of the development of the employees. And then, last but not least, something we've never really had concrete, and that's a performance evaluation program.
We've already implemented that, and at one point in time, I had given you an example of the template that we're doing. We have already started initiating the staff development program. We have our evaluation form. Staff just was, the deadline to turn it in to me was August 1st. And that is basically what this is, 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 these are the- Staff just was, the deadline to turn it in to me was August first, and that is basically what this is, is, is these are the goals that we've set for the organization, and, and I'll, I'll be happy to provide a copy of that as well.
And when will the evaluations all be completed?
Right now, we have set the goals, it's a, it's a quarterly checkup evaluation process for the next year. And so right now, what we've done is we've established the organizational goals, and the operational goals of each employee will be designed to help achieve these, these six operational goals.
So where, where will those be physically, when will those be physically completed?
It, what, the goals that we're setting now, and establishing the process, and training employees how to use the tool, will be established for ten one, and it will be for the next fiscal period.
Where do we go from August first to, to ten one? What happened in that sixty days?
It's a new, it's a new tool, and so we've been working on designing it, and working with staff on understanding how to use it, what the expectations are. I mean, we're certainly evaluating it this quarter, but the goals that we're setting now will be the same goals for this next year.
So Q3 is your pilot, Q4 is your implementation?
Yes.
So now we're gonna hear from Chris, right?
I'm not sure exactly where we are, we've, we've jumped around here a little bit.
Thirteen, though.
Well, I wanted, I wanted to stop on eleven for, for a second. The road turnover to Lee County. I, I can read what's on here, but if you don't mind, I'd also like Tony to tell us when this road turnover to Lee County is gonna be completed. I have a serious bet going on with Mr. Souchelle in the back row.
I don't know, the title companies.
I'm only about two years behind.
Yeah, the title company's working on the commitment that will provide the surveyor. I think the surveyor is ninety-five percent done with their field work, is that the latest, I think?
Yes.
And then I'll be getting the title work to the surveyor hopefully in the next two weeks.
Okay, give, give me a date, when are we gonna be, when's it gonna be turned over?
As soon as the engineers and lawyers get through it.
I will push as soon as we, I talked with the rest of the crew, because they're pushing pretty hard, as soon as we can.
I, I, I think we're done with the punch, with the punch list, as far as, the only thing we need to wrap up is the survey.
And it's the survey, and the title work, and the survey. I will contact Tom Murphy and find out how long it will take after I give him the information, and have something more definite the next board meeting.
It would be nice to have a target date.
Yeah, I'll find out, yeah, from Tom Murphy, the surveyor, after I give him the information, how long it will take him, so, by the next board meeting I'll have it, or I can send it around.
Did we video all of those titles?
Drainage pumps, I think they've all been, right, they've all been videoed, the drainage clean.
And one of the issues that we are having, that we, we've brought to WCI's attention, is some drainage easements we're having up on the shoulder at Town Lake. You might have seen a big huge rut on the side of the road, so we have brought that to their attention, and they basically didn't want to repair it, so we brought it to the attention of Lee County. So depending on what their evaluation of that is, that may also be something that needs to be addressed.
And wasn't there, what did we decide about the, the broken, the broken sign on the road? Was that our responsibility to replace? Isn't there, wasn't there, uh, there was one sign on the side of the road that was, been hit, was broken in half, and?
The signage has all been installed, and the majority of the white signs, the old white signs have been removed.
This was a new sign that was, I think, hit or broken, and then there was a temporary?
Yeah, that shit, that's been repaired.
It's been repaired, okay, great, sorry.
That was up on Gateway by Devon, Devon and Child Girl Scout.
Kind of by Pinecrest, before you didn't Pinecrest.
Yeah, right, for the Girl Scout, that's been repaired.
So that should have been the responsibility of WCI, then?
In that section, I believe so.
For sure.
I believe that sign was.
I have the feeling Tony is not gonna give me a date for when we're gonna.
Not today, I will, I will at the next board meeting, though, yes, sir.
Now that you back me up, I'd like to talk about twelve for a couple of minutes. It indicates in here, new utility vehicle is ordered, tractor will be picked up, well, I don't see the tractor out there, so that means that the utility vehicle has been delivered, correct?
Yes.
Good. Then the last sentence, inspection should begin the week after delivery. I thought that was supposed to be for a person to do work, not just drive around and inspect.
Well, it will be for both, so what we're trying to, what we're trying to do is Justin is going to come in Monday at nine o'clock. Justin, he's the one that's doing our facility inspection now, and we're gonna do a training ride on Monday morning, and we're going to go out, and basically, while we're, we're looking at taking, taking that utility vehicle and staff, they're going to go from one end of the district to the other. We're equipping it so they can fix some things on the fly, instead of having to turn around and, and not get them done in a timely manner. But a lot of those inspections will be keeping better tabs on the performance of mainscape, and addressing some of the issues that we can't necessarily see from a vehicle driving by at thirty-five miles per hour. So that's what we'll be doing Monday morning, and we are on schedule with that.
So we hired a person whose task was to be the maintenance person, and which we were supposed to have a pickup truck for that person to be able to carry their tools. Then we switched to this huge van thing that doesn't work, and now we had to go to this, so that a person from Severn Trent, correct me if I'm wrong, so that a person from Severn Trent will have a vehicle to drive around and inspect our works, and/or that vehicle will be used to inspect that our landscaper that we're paying, how many hundred thousand is that?
Eight hundred and ninety thousand.
Yeah, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We have to have a separate vehicle for one of our staff to go out and check that that person is getting, or that company is getting the work done. And yet, we still haven't got a person who's assigned to maintain the assets of this community on a regular basis, that that's their job, their indebtedness. This is yours, you own it, take pride in it, and make sure that I don't see any more of these pictures like we get every month.
And that is what, that is what this weekly inspection will be for, and so, yes, I think to everything, except the gator wasn't, wasn't purchased, so Justin could, could ride around, so the ST employee could ride around. He is coming Monday morning to help give us some insight on what he looks for and how he prepares that report, because the bar has been raised on our staff to keep tabs, better tabs, and more timely turnaround on what needs to be performed within the district.
Is that Anthony's job?
Yes.
So he, Justin's training Anthony, or providing additional training to Anthony, a staff employee? Okay.
Are we finished?
Yeah.
May we go to utilities thirteen and fourteen? Is it possible that Chris could give that part of the report?
It's the pump station rehab and the Zinra, is it?
Good evening, Chris Schumaker, Utilities Department, and I've got two items and a short status report for you today. The first item is approval for utilities expenditure for an irrigation well evaluation. And this, this project was included in the twenty sixteen budget, and we have a proposal from Lane, which is a local well contractor, and they're also national, and we basically are using five shallow wells and one deep well to provide irrigation water for the system. And one of those wells was, was replaced in two thousand and eight, along with a new deep well that was put in at that time. And this project is to do a hydrogeological evaluation of the other four wells, and basically, we'll pull the pumps, check the chemistry on the well, the specific capacity, do a pump test, and also evaluate the mechanical equipment, the pumps and controls for each of those wells. And that evaluation will cost thirty-nine hundred and fifty dollars for each well, for a total cost of fifteen thousand eight hundred. And the remainder of the budgeted funds for the total line item of twenty-five thousand will use to make repairs while we're in the field of anything we find that is, uh, really needs to be done, and why, one item we did have on our list is the irrigation well that's in the back of the soccer fields. The motor is actually bad on that pump, and so we're piggybacking, so instead of pulling that and replacing the motor, they'll be pulling the motor as part of the evaluation, and we'll just do that at the same time and save some money. But there's some control boxes that need some minor repair, fuses and things like that. What'll come out of this evaluation is a report that'll let us know what the status and useful life of those wells are, and whether we can continue to use those wells and for how long, or do we need to start looking at replacements for those wells to be able to provide the quantities of water that the system demands?
So Chris, the quantity of water that's available to us from Lee County is insufficient?
Correct, the, the amount of reclaimed water is not, and, and the irrigation system is subsidized by these wells, the groundwater, and they're capable of pumping five hundred and fifty to six hundred and fifty gallons a minute. So, and right now, we don't have an issue with providing that water, and Lee County continues to put facilities online to add sources of reclaimed water, but they'll still need to be a potable offset. And right now, from our irrigation usage, about thirty percent, thirty-five percent is actually the reclaimed water, the rest of that water comes from the wells. And typically, a, a well will have a useful life of twenty years. Some of them have been in the ground for fifty and last, the one in two thousand and eight collapsed, so they had to replace that one. So we'll be dropping a camera down those wells and looking at the integrity of the casing, looking at the geology of it, and making an assessment of each one.
I think we had a little hiccup here from, uh, item thirteen to what Chris was talking about, which is item five D.
Oh, sorry about that.
So.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I was going to the agenda items for the budget expenditures, and this was, this was just part of the status report. And I'll, I'll start over again, sorry. Pump station rehab, right now, we have, we have several projects ongoing in utilities, and this is a project that was included in the twenty sixteen budget, and we're going out right now, we've gone, gotten the information to put the bid documents together, and basically refurbished two of the major pump stations, and the majority of that work, because there are new pumps, and several of the stations will be bringing the pumping above ground, enhancing the telemetry units on it, adding the potable water wash downs, and fencing the installations for security.
This is what you talked about the last meeting?
Yes, sir. And, and I'll, I'll add on to that, another project that was budgeted this year that has not gotten underway, and that will be getting started at the same time, and that'll be probably mid to late August, I met with a contractor this morning, and that's installation of the telemetry equipment at B one, B nine, Girl Scout in Stony Brook, and that'll be the major equipment, there'll be eight inputs on that equipment, high, low alarms, power going off, and that equipment will be tied into a new panel we're putting in for the wells that'll handle it, and we can send it right over to this building by antenna to a computer, and also send it to our Verizon phones. So there'll be notifications to staff, we don't have to worry about somebody walking down the street, walking their dog and seeing an alarm on. And that's the same equipment that was recently installed in the new pump stations at Casella and Matarita. So that work will get underway in late August, and by the end of September, it will be done to enhance those stations, and adding permanent generators to two of the stations, so fencing generators, telemetry, and upgrading the piping.
Now, you're gonna be sure to put those generators over at Matarita, too, right?
Well, at the, at the moment, they aren't, they're scheduled for Girl Scout and B one right up here on Gateway, but the, the budgets for, will start again in October, and we have additional dollars to do more generators next year.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm looking at item five D on our agenda. For the purchase of the, excuse me, the evaluations, thirty-nine hundred and fifty dollars, a piece for a total of fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars, which would test and evaluate the district's irrigation well. May I have motion to approve that item five D? Mr. Dubauer?
You give it. Pam.
You got it, Pam. Are there further questions for Chris on five D? I have one.
Sir.
Several months ago, some of our residents came and stood where you are, and were complaining about the irrigation pressure at their homes. And during that conversation, we also talked about telling residents on what days of the week they can use the irrigation system. I don't know if you were present when those conversations were going on, is there any way you can update us briefly on those two issues?
That I'm not familiar with, and I wasn't on updating the irrigation schedules. I do know that in some communities where they've had heavy demands on those irrigation days, they've spread that out, and actually done it seven days a week instead of two days a week, and changed the schedules throughout the community so there wasn't such a large demand, you know, on the watering days.
Well, you obviously know a lot more about it than I do, but could you put that, Madam Operations Manager, would it be all right to ask Chris to put that on his agenda, and come back to us at a later date, so we know what the professionals recommend in this area?
And you could probably get with Danny.
Sure, the engineers are working on it.
If you've got any, need any background, I'm sure Danny can give it to you.
No, what about, what about the pressure? The irrigation pressure, I've been assured on many an occasion that we have enough pressure to take care of not only our current, but also the residences that are under construction or contemplated, but yet, we still have had residents come and tell us that they don't have enough.
And now I'd have to look a little closer into, I know when it, when it leaves the system and goes into the main, we're running eighty PSI at, at the main pump, and in most cases, and throughout the community, and there have been some localized areas, and it may be the piping within that area, or someone at the end of a cul-de-sac, by the time everyone's running their sprinklers at the same time, might impact it. But I know Tetris Tech's working on updating the irrigation model and adding the demands of the new community, and we're looking closer at that.
Okay, well, we're not only interested in the new community, we're looking at the existing community.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This, this is all tied together.
Right.
And you're the pro, and can you work on this for us?
Oh, sure, and we'll have to go out and take some pressure tests at different times at some of those locations where we get the complaints.
Anything else?
Are you talking, are you talking about volume, or are you talking about pressure?
I'm talking about pressure.
Volume.
You're talking about volume now, right?
Exactly, because if you don't have the volume, you don't have the pressure. So it's cavitated. Is this one continuous line that starts at point A and ultimately is designed for the last of whatever is point, I'm gonna call it point Z? It is a, it is a loop, it is?
You have some dead end lines on branches, but most of it, most of it.
That's Tyler, he's got a few comments.
Of course, of course he does.
Hello. I'm Tyler Wainwright, I'm with Tetris Tech, the majority of your system is looped, yes, there are some parts that are not, there are some dead end streets, and a lot of those dead end streets are inherently where you're gonna have lower pressures at.
Gotcha, now, do you know where those are?
Yes, sir.
Is Pinecrest one of those?
Some of the longer streets in Stony Brook, and those are obviously dead end streets, they don't loop through the ends of those roads, they just end at the cul-de-sac, so, I mean, we know for a fact that some of those areas are, will inherently have lower pressures. have lower pressures than, you know, some of the looped areas just by the nature of how they were designed. Pine Crest I don't know about, but Stony Brook, the long streets, those are the ones that stand out to me right now.
Is there is there a fix in reality?
Um, well, there's always a fix. I mean, I don't know if there's a need to do anything at the current time. If you want more water, you can certainly always add pipe, but costs are always an issue.
So that's not part of our capital improvement program?
One of the things that we've been working on with with Mainscape is trying to get some feedback about the irrigation system. We have been band-aiding the irrigation system for a long time, so we've been, we're trying to develop a request for for information to look at some consultants, and we had talked about this at one other board meeting, that we need to probably evaluate having our own our own water restrictions. And that would probably be big enough now in using enough water to evaluate that. With that said, we should probably do what we would like to, that we're trying to work on and possibly request the board's support at a later date, is a total evaluation of system, including the infrastructure, the volume, the pressure, and, you know, including the engineers in that process, because I think it is, I think it is time, I believe a lot of the infrastructure that's out there is probably from the beginning of the district, you know, almost thirty years old. And really, there's very little of the technology, it has become very, very encumbering to manage because of the technology that we had on some of the modules as far as being able to run the zones electronically from a particular panel, all of that is gone. And so everything is on these battery nodes out in each of the zones, so it has become very labor intensive to monitor the system. And so we really need to evaluate, I think, the the infrastructure as a whole, why we're doing these studies.
So what you're saying is, is we don't need a rate study, huh? Later. Chris, if you'd give me a moment, I believe I have a motion and a second to approve item five D to expenditure for the irrigation well and evaluation rehab. I do, do I not? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote, five zero. Thank you. Chris, would you please continue?
The second second portion of the operational report is the Zener meter audit, meter installation. We have a hundred and thirteen meters left to install. We've started to take delivery of those parts from Fortaline. We expect the rest of that equipment to be delivered next week and the week after, by the fourth week in August, begin installation of those meters. We're working diligently with some of the property owners and the homeowners association to try to schedule those installations where it's least disruptive to say the operations of a clubhouse that might be closed on Monday so we can go in there and do the work. Trying to schedule some of the installations after five o'clock for some of the larger commercial buildings because changing out a three inch or a two inch meter isn't a fifteen minute process. Typically, it wouldn't take more than forty-five minutes or an hour, but you certainly don't wanna shut down the Gardner Building or go in and tell the people their water's gonna be out for an hour and they can't flush the toilet. And the residential meters, of course, are a little little less problematic because going out to those, you can always knock on the door, let the people know. And we'll also have boots on the ground with each one of those installations, inspecting the installation for leaks and completeness and also testing the meter after it's been activated. And we expect this to take about four to five weeks. I mean, it's only a hundred and thirteen meters, but they are large meters, and when the crews come out to do those two and three inch, you know, they they may only get two or three or four done in a day. Or they, if they're putting in the five eighths inch meters, they could do fifteen in a day.
This this report says that Zener will complete the audit by the end of July.
Right, they they...
The end of July is passed.
Yes, sir, that that audit was complete and the beginning of this week, we got a final report from them on them checking all their mechanical equipment, the radio signal equipment, and they also gave us a list of problems like broken lids, missing lids, a few fittings that were leaking. And we're working with Fortaline right now to resolve whether they're gonna come out and fix it or whether we're gonna fix it. If we fix it, we'll bill them for it, but we're giving them the opportunity to come do the fix.
Question for Chris?
I understand, one, a quick thing, so Chris, since you've been in role, it sounds like that you're evaluating certain aspects of utilities, probably whatever is most critical, this one brought to your attention. But do you, are you at a point, or will you at a point, at some point in the future where you'll have an assessment of our utilities division, both from an inventory, kind of productivity, and also from a resource perspective, is that, are you gearing up for that type of?
Well, we're gearing up for that and I'm working right now to clear out this backlog of two thousand and sixteen projects that was in the budget that have just for the last six months due to staff departures and that have kinda gone by the wayside, because I wanna get those up and rolling and get that money spent. I don't wanna come back to the board into the next fiscal year and why didn't you spend that money we gave you last year? And some of these projects are critical and also working with the staff on critical aspects, mostly public safety, reliability and emergency. The van Mr. Newbauer referred to, we've actually turned that into a mobile service van and equipped with bins and parts and have fuses and relays and timers and some of that standard equipment that you would want if you get a call out at night. And to have those spare parts and also maintenance parts, we've been going around and replacing floats and marking them, so it makes them easier for maintenance and, of course, upgrading the lift stations. The productivity part of it is coming up with that new evaluation procedure, and I sat down at length with each of the staff members and talked to them about licensing and training and opportunities and the classes that we're gonna require them to take as part of their professional advancement.
Okay. So you basically need to put out fires before you can start?
Yeah, and and some of it's been simple even as, you know, putting locks on the vaults of the lift stations and some safety and updating our emergency management plans and having having those spare parts in place and even getting this telemetry system off the ground, because once that's installed in the major lift stations, again, that can go right to our telephones and tell us the system's out, the power's out. And when you go to some of those units, you can just plug in like a car and it'll tell you what's wrong in the station. So instead of sitting out there trying to diagnose the issue. So we're trying to upgrade that and, you know, bring the technology to help, we don't have the people, so.
Yeah, I think what what I was ultimately trying to look for is kind of a state of our utilities. Where are we at from aging equipment to, you know, are we, you know, do we have the right pressure, what are we forecasting for the next X amount, you know, are we, are we in a good state or is there some work that needs to be addressed and how critical is that? And you don't necessarily have to answer that now, but that's kinda what, I'm sure that's what you're getting to.
Well, we are taking steps, and they recently completed the valve exercise program just last week with U.S. Water, we had them exercising all the valves and they brought a report back on the condition of the valves, and some of them came back poor or unknown, where they couldn't get down or the top was broken off. So we're evaluating that list and putting together into a capital budget which those valves are critical, because if you have a lift station go down, you go to turn the valve to shut the flow off while you repair it, the valve doesn't work.
You know, it's a problem.
So still looking at some of those things and it all goes back to asset management and we're working on that.
Okay. Thanks, Chris, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are you finished, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. April, would you continue on items fifteen? Thank you.
What item are you on?
Fifteen, I believe, I have it to follow off my dog, dog tag door tags.
Door tags. Dog tags.
That's what I said.
Sorry about that, I gave my sheet away. So what I've tried to do is organize this report a little bit, not only for your benefit, but also just for my benefit from an administrative perspective, so things won't slide off at the table and never bring them back to you to follow up on. So the door tags, there is no current follow-up because you had indicated that you wanted us to come back with a follow-up after December. The first cycle went without the door tags, and I will tell you how how that went. We did have a couple of complaints, I didn't get my door tag, but I think that's, I think that's acceptable for any transition. One of the things that we are going to address on this next cycle is, have you ever got the mail that says, you know, immediate response required stamped on the outside of the envelope? We need to do something like that because we got several calls through customer service that they didn't get the letter and perhaps they didn't open the envelope. So that's another thing that we want to address, whereas often if you get a postcard and you you can actually see the language on it, but the postcards were small, so we opted against that. So this time, we're going to to try a little different strategy and put an indication on the outside of the envelope that that needs needs their immediate attention. But other than that, you know, the shut-off process was, it's a, our our peak times here at the utility is very stressful because, you know, we only have limited staff doing the customer service calls and the volume goes way up. I know the billings manager and the billing specialist had been working very, very diligently at resolving some of the findings from the audit, and so I think that is going well as far as being able to make strides on correcting not only the issues that we're seeing on the street with the meter audit, but also following through and making sure that those corrections get updated in the billing system. So so we are going through some painstaking adjustments and we are trying to keep residents and customers notified of what's happening with their bill. So we've been sending out some information with the billing and we've sent out some some letters, specific letters, to to cover some of the issues. Okay, if if I can, I'd like to take an opportunity, I might, I might be sticking my head out here, but if we could go back to the Zener audit, at the July seventh meeting, was it, Tony, that we had decided to to send the letter to Zener?
July twenty first.
July twenty first meeting.
To Fortaline.
So there was an email correspondence today about the letter that Tony drafted to send to Fortaline to request them pay for the extra ten thousand dollars that we are paying above the original Fortaline contract for the U.S. Water contract to install the last one hundred and thirteen meters. And I apologize, I I truly must have just not been truly engaged in that conversation or I would have said something then. Staff has been working very hard with Fortaline, we believe that they have stepped up, they are trying to make this right. The last one hundred and thirteen meters were our problem meters, and we we believe as staff that the ten thousand dollars, which is less than one percent of the contract amount, and to go into a contract of this size without any contingency at all, that we believe that it's not necessary to send the request to Fortaline, that that I think that I'm asking the board to consider absorbing that cost as an organization and as a utility company. Fortaline is our partner, we have, we are tied to them for a very long time, we have a warranty process to go through, they have funded this audit, they sent several employees out. I feel, I think we believe that that the audit has been so far successful, that we're getting getting the results correct? That we're getting the results that we need to get from that. And one of the things that I've been working on with contractors is as a small government, we are very needy. We have, we have small amount of staff resources, and so we have to partner with these contractors. And I just wanted to be sure that from a legal perspective to pursue ten thousand dollars on a one point two million dollar contract, I just wanna be sure that we're making a cognizant decision and not going to harm that relationship.
Does, Chris, do you agree with with that recommendation to withdraw the requests for the ten thousand dollars and the greater good of the relationship and and the due diligence from Fortaline?
I think if we have some claims against what they're doing, we may wanna wait till later, you know, when we're settling everything at the end, and I think it it would antagonize them a little bit, and they have been stepping up and been very helpful lately. And the last board meeting, you know, made the decision, let's go ahead and send them a letter and try and get that money back. I think sometime too, us asking versus an attorney's letter. I'm not disferring...
Oh, no, no, once again, and I drafted for Chris's signature as opposed to mine.
So maybe we should, you know, hold that, don't forget, but hold it until a little further on.
And let let the dust settle and do any kind of settlement at the very end, because there may be some other issues coming up between them and S.T.
Yeah, I think that's very wise.
I don't disagree with that.
Basically, since we have a hundred and thirteen meters yet to go on this deal and we're gonna be needing their meters for the new developments that are coming through, we're gonna be, we're gonna be in their pocket or there in ours, whichever way you wanna put it for a good, long time. So, members of the board, could we at least agree not to send that letter, at least at this time, and we'll reevaluate that whole process once the hundred and thirteen meter balance of this one million plus contract is finished successfully? Would that be all right with everybody?
I'd agree with that.
I agree with that. Have they, have we paid them up to this date? Do we still have, will there be additional billings from Fortaline?
We have been getting some additional billings from Fortaline for for equipment and the last hundred and thirteen meters, which was in the original contract, which were the large meters, were a little over forty thousand dollars. Now, that was included in the original contract, so that's nothing different. But also in that one point three million dollar contract, there was retainage held, you know, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars that we hold until the contract's over and everything's done, which would be the final payment. So there's still, after everything's paid for and the meters are done, the equipment, there's still a hundred and ten thou- twelve thousand dollars that would be in the last pay request. And that's typically...
That's what I wanted to do.
Yeah, that's typically when there's any issues that come up, it would be subtracted out of that retainage and that final payment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. I'm seeing that the majority of the board agrees with that recommendation and will not send that letter either from Tony or from Chris. We'll reevaluate that that whole situation once the hundred and thirteen meters have been installed and the contract is ready to be finalized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please continue if you have other things you wanna talk to us about.
I think everything, everything else so far, one of the issues on the on the follow-up items that I'm trying to address is getting the P.A. system fixed at the sports complex. The sports complex is fixing to open again, and that's something that we haven't been able to, I use the term a lot, drill down on, because we need, it's it's kind of a, I guess it's a wiring issue, so we have to address the the P.A. system itself and somewhere on the field between a speaker is is a broken wire, so we're trying to figure out how to handle that. But we believe that the P.A. system is an integral part of the lightning indicator system over there, that that when the lightning indicator would go off, we need the P.A. system to basically be able to announce for people to get off the field.
We oughta bring them up to date on item twenty.
Item twenty. Okay, so we did, this is removing the bike lane chevrons in in Pelican. So we did our due diligence research, we went back and looked at the D.R.I.s and the verdict was, is that the bicycle chevrons should not have been put on, was never approved, it was never in the in the plan, to be put on the four-foot pathway on on the shoulder. And so we were making arrangements to have those pressure washed off. There probably will be, you know, an outline of it left on the pavement. There probably will be, you know, an outline of it left on the pavement that, if I understand correctly, will probably fade over time.
And for clarification, it's not a requirement of the DRI. It, there was, it was not shown on the construction plans for the roadway, and that's one of the issues.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that's the confirmation, I think Tyler received, from the city engineer, which does support the removing now.
Are you finished with this part?
Yes.
I would like to have the board recess for ten minutes.
Okay.